...addiction themselves, so naturally I had some disbelief. Then, when I spoke to that person, just the honest story in their voice began to instill hope to my heart. Now knowing if I would get an opportunity to change my life, I became extremely discouraged, so while high on heroin and crack cocaine, I decided to take my life. On a bridge standing on the opposite side of the guardrail, God's grace began to work in my life. And shortly after, I was on the bus to Bangor, Maine to meet Bobby Bloodsoe for the first time. Nothing had worked. Jails, rehabs, medication, all failed, but with City Reach Church and their Hope Homes offers real, I filled all the gaps missing in my life and within hours, I felt the difference and God began to work in my life. I was taught that there is true freedom from addiction, that my relationship with Jesus Christ is all I need to experience fullness, happiness, purpose, and joy. I stand before you today to tell you that this program works, that this program is it. This is what is going to save addicts, homeless, and change the lives of the lost. That this is it. City Reach Hope Homes is it. All you need is Jesus. It's nothing new. It's been around for over 2,000 years. Our laws, our constitution have all been drawn from this way of living and believing. It's Jesus. It's belief that one man who was fully man and fully God, became, said, died for whoever, rose again so that the entire world can have a chance to experience life the way it was intended. It's been around for 2,000 years. I just took one man named Bobby Bloodsoe to write me of this truth that Jesus in the gospel can and will and has always radically saved and changed lives.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
What did you start out? You said 12, age 12 you started.
Yeah, age 12, I started using drugs.
What did you use? What was the entry?
Let's see, entry marijuana. Then I started using prescription pills at that same age, before I went to my first rehab at 13.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Cesar. I said that correctly, didn't I? Yes, you did.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. Yeah, my name is Cesar, last name Almonaco. For me, I guess, I was broken, which led me to my addictions. I was four years old when my father molested me, and I was molested for the next three years until age seven, when he sodomized me, which really messed me up inside. I was really angry, really lost. I didn't know what, you know, how to function normally, so I kind of kept to myself, really secluded. Going to, further down, at age 15, you know, I started to branch out and actually make friends. I started to drink, I started smoking at 15. I was drinking by 16, doing marijuana. By 17, I was using methamphetamines. I was just going deeper and deeper into this drug world that, you know, I did, I just loved it, I guess, at the time, you know? I didn't know any better, but it cured my anger inside or it just fueled it. And then my mother passes away and that just like gave me another reason to just want to do more, to do more drugs and hurt myself more. So I got down to that bottom of that barrel. I hit rock bottom and I was tired of hating myself, I was tired of being ashamed, I was tired of, I was just tired of myself. And so someone intervenes and stops me from doing something really stupid, and a friend of mine comes into this program called City Reach Bangor, and he actually started ministering to me while I was, you know, being a functioning addict, you know, sustaining a job, but really just lost and so broken and just surviving. The day he graduated the program was the day I entered the program, because I knew this kid, I walked homeless with him, I walked the streets with him, I saw what he was doing, and if it could change him, then there was hope for me, because that's what I needed. I was broken, I was alone, I had nowhere to turn, and this place gave me everything. So it's amazing. I mean, there is, there is, there is hope. There's hope for everybody. You don't have to be addicted. I'm no longer addicted. I am much better off. I now run and manage a moving company, Alpha Movers. So if any of you guys need a piano moved or any furniture moved, hit me up. What else? Heck, I'm a lot happier, I'll tell you that, you know? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So do you have any questions? Questions, anyone? That's good. Thank you. All right, thank you. And then Ali? Or Alan?
Hi, thank you guys for having me today. My name is Ally. I've lived in Maine my whole life. I grew up in Old Town. It was a really small, little community. It would have taken a lot to go on there, but I grew up in a big family. I had four brothers, four sisters. It was chaotic. It was crazy. A lot of things were overlooked and forgotten. When I was 13, I started using drugs. My home life, my father was very abusive and there was a lot going on there. It was kind of under the table and tidden. So I started smoking marijuana, I started drinking on the weekends, I started finding something in those things that seemed to like fill and block those feelings, and it just continued to grow. It never seemed to get better. I continued to strive for it. And when I got in high school, it progressed to street drugs, it progressed to prescription painkillers, prescription, anything that was prescribed, anything I could get my hands on. I just wanted to escape from life. I didn't have any hope in life. I didn't see myself with a future. I didn't see anything to really live for or strive for, and that just progressed and I just was entangled in many things, in bad relationships. This past year, I had to jump ahead a little bit. I got into a relationship that was very abusive. I was dating a guy and we were using drugs together and we're using bath salts, which we all remember when that epidemic of bath salts was really in Bangor. And we were using together and it just changed my whole mindset. I mean, my mind just became unwired. I couldn't even hold a conversation with anybody. I couldn't think correctly. I couldn't read, I couldn't write, and he became angry from it. He was very abusive and he ended up getting arrested and served a year in prison. I was just still in that state of just brokenness and addiction and I didn't know where to go. I had no hope. I didn't want to live anymore. When I was dating him, we had visited the City Reach Church. His parents had known about the program and known about the church and they really wanted us to get help. We went to the church. It was an outreach service and like I remember the music and the message that they spoke about and it just stuck with me, even through all those trials that I continued to go through. And then after he was arrested, I still was spiraling down and I started, you know, seeking other things to continue to get that drug and it involves money, you know? I started doing things that were against my morals to get that money and it was really just a hopeless life. I ended up, you know, getting diseases and finding myself in a place where I didn't want to live anymore. I had no hope. I was at the point where I was going back to this church believing that there was something there or out of state of my life. I brought this before my little sister and I just asked, "Would you go with me?" I remember the night we went back. I went abroad and it was just, I felt the presence of God so strong and I just knew that there was something more, that there was hope in that place, that these testimonies and these stories that these people shared, it wasn't just something for them, it was something that I could achieve, something that could happen in my life. And I began seeking the Lord. I began coming to the church faithfully and soon after, I ended up joining the program after, my time's almost up, so I don't want to go over, but after a series of events and I just felt such a divine encounter with the Lord, I committed my life to the home and I graduated the program. I'm over a year sober now and I'm never looking back. I'm no longer an addict. I am set free. I don't believe in drug replacement. I tried that. I tried the marijuana replacement. I feel very strongly about that. My actual brother, who's a caregiver as well, and I went through that and it didn't help me. I actually relapsed with the bath salts and continued down that path. So I just came here as evidence today. I know you think there's evidence and numbers, which there is, but as living, breathing evidence that this helped me, that it was the Lord, that it was the fellowship there, the people that truly loved me, that saw something in me, that told me that my life had value, that my life had work, that I was redeemable, that there was hope to not give up, people that were willing to take that call. So I feel very passionately about this ministry, these homes, and now I dedicate my life to find other women that are broken, that are lost, that are in those same places. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Appreciate your testimony. Questions, anyone? Thank you again. Jennifer, is it Tamara?
Tarmi.
Tarmi?
Tarmi.
Okay.
My name is Jennifer Tarmi. I live in Lewiston. I am here, I'm a client of Cafeteries in Auburn. Without, I'm a recovering addict myself. I, I used and drank for 20 years of my life and I have a 16, I turned 16 yesterday, a 16-year-old daughter, who I knew I needed to be a better example for, but I didn't know how to get there. And I didn't even really know that I wanted to get there. I got into some legal trouble in 2012 and I was facing some pretty hefty felony charges and I was able to take part, participate in the Antirrington County Drug Court Program, which was facilitated through treatment by Cafeteries. And without their help, I wouldn't have made it where I am today. It's been several years that I've been working on recovery, but I don't have several years of recovery. My journey has been difficult, to say the least. I overdosed and almost took my life in May 2014. But even when I fell or stumbled, the staff at Cafeteries and the Antirrington County Drug Court team were there to help me pick myself up and get back on the right path. They were there to support me when I was ready to give up on myself. They helped me see the potential that I had to be, to be the mother I was supposed to be, the daughter I was supposed to be.
Take your time.
I just know that without the help of treatment that I was able to receive, that I wouldn't be here today. And I was fortunate enough to be able to have health insurance. I didn't have outrageous copays and, you know, I was financially able to receive main care. There are so many people out there that aren't. My brother has no dependents, so he falls under the income guidelines for main care, but he also falls under the guidelines for the federally funded healthcare. So he's just sitting there in limbo with no insurance and an addiction to overgives. And then what do you do? He resorts to the only ways he knows how to make money or to make himself not be sick. It's been an ongoing struggle for him, as has many of my family and friends. He's 33 years old and my mother had to put him on her insurance so that he was able to get the treatment that he so desperately needed. There are many people that I worked with on Drug Court that have, in their court ordered to go to these treatment programs and still can't afford to pay even the copays. They don't really have a company like Cafeteries that is willing to make such a generous fighting scale fees. And you're talking about 20, 30 to 40 dollars a week in copays where they don't have any income, when they're coming out of addiction that prevents them from being able to work or when they're just coming out of jail and having no resources.
Thank you very much. No, no, that's fine. That's fine. Hey, thank you very much for your testimony. Tiffany Lawrence? And then Vanessa McCoy and Angela Westhoff and then Denise. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon, Ellen. My name is Tiffany. I'm a client at Crossroads. First of all, first off, I just wanted to say thank you for letting me share with you my experience in my recovery program and how it has changed my life so far. Started using at the age of 17. I was prescribed narcotics during and after my first pregnancy, which was a high-risk pregnancy, which I was. At that time, I didn't know anything about addiction. By the time I was 21, I had four children and was very dependent on drugs, to the point where I was lying and stealing to get money to support my cabinet. At 23, I got into some legal trouble and was no longer able to care for my children. I got clean and stayed sober for 15 months while I was taking care of my legal troubles. I never attended any meetings, went to detox or treatment facilities. I didn't work a program at all. I just lived day by day and tried my hardest not to use, which is miserable when you have no coping skills to deal with cravings. At the end of those 15 months, I was put on probation. That is when I started using drugs again. My use once again got me into more legal trouble and I found myself in and out of jail for two more years. In October 2015, I found out that I was pregnant and asked the courts and my probation officer if I could go into a treatment facility. I knew I couldn't live that lifestyle anymore and I wanted a better life for my children and myself. They agreed to send me to a facility and I suggested that I go to Crossroads because I had heard good things about it from family and friends. I got into Crossroads within a week of my intake and it has been the best thing that has ever happened to my recovery. I've only been in treatment for 27 days, but Crossroads has changed my life in such a positive way. This pregnancy has been so much different than my others. This time, I feel so healthy and confident in myself. I feel that I can be a clean and sober mother and raise my children in a safe and positive way. There are a variety of groups at Crossroads that the clients attend daily. Many of the groups are focused on women and parenting. The education groups on parenting revolve around women and their children and it helps to bridge the gap between sobriety and motherhood. Crossroads is the only treatment program in the state of Maine where mothers can bring their children. Is one of a few programs that will take pregnant women, particularly women in the last tri- the later trimesters. With my experience with being a mother and an addict, trying to get clean, I know too well the struggles that come along with balancing motherhood, lack of resources, work, finding childcare, all while on my way. Crossroads has very helpful staff members to work with women to make aftercare plans and security resources. I have been working with a case manager at Crossroads to find sober living for when I complete my treatment. It has been a really big struggle. I have applied to about 10 different places and they are not accepting applications at this time or it's one to two year waiting list. I believe that opening more sober living homes and treatment centers for my pregnant, for pregnant postpartum women and women with children would be beneficial because these struggling women wouldn't keep falling back into the same old patterns of active addiction. If there were more treatment centers for those women, they could be learning new parenting skills, working on their recovery while maintaining sobriety. I wish there could be more treatment options and halfway houses available with all ranges of income for these women like myself in this state of Maine. These places could possibly lower the number of infants born drug affected and chemically dependent. It could help women regain custody of their children. I think these resources could help stop the rapid increase in women being addicted, overdosing, or even dying. I truly believe that these resources could stop this epidemic. Residential programs are a great first step, but mothers are a tough loop. There are few choices once they complete treatment. There are no addiction resources, resource centers, or intensive outpatient day programs that have childcare, which is the next logical step, under an outpatient facility. A mother cannot afford childcare that she cannot attend and this leaves a huge gap in her recovery program. I'm very thankful for having main care and so I am able to attend IOP and counseling when I leave Crossroads. I'm grateful to have a great support system from NA meetings, 12-step meetings, and also a great family that is helping me to my road to recovery. Not a lot of women have that many resources or support and have to wait for scholarships or funding to be able to attend treatment centers, IOP or counseling, which is, makes it hard for addicts to get sober. I know that without any treatment, my life would look a lot different right now and I'm truly grateful for the opportunities I have been given and I know that I don't want my children or yours to be living this vicious cycle. Our next generation is depending on us to stop this life of active addiction. Thank you.
Tiffany, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your testimony. We should be very, very grateful.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Vanessa McCoy. I am program director with the Health Nepoty Alliance and a member of the Main Harm Reduction Alliance, also known as MIRA. I'm here to testify, mean or for or against LR 2599. I just want to say also thank you to everybody who shares their personal stories and I think it's my courage to do that. On behalf of MIRA and all of my agencies, programs, and people, we applaud the legislature's efforts to address this important issue. This is a step in the right direction, but it's far from perfect. While MIRA supports the effort to curtail the trafficking of opioids, we feel that this bill does not adequately address barriers to treatment and recovery. Maine is in the midst of a public health crisis, which we've talked about a lot today. Overdose deaths continue to spiral out of control. New cases of hepatitis C are surging, surpassing every state in the nation. The time for debate has passed. Now is the time for action. So the Main Harm Reduction Alliance and my agency deliver cutting-edge harm reduction programming for people, people actively struggling with addiction throughout Maine. We provide syringe exchange services, overdose prevention education, and HIV and hepatitis C screening. Our understanding of the opioid crisis is deep and is personal. We notice when people disappear, when they become a statistic reported out annually by the chief medical examiner. And we are there when people are ready to take their first steps toward recovery. We try to help them when we can. Treatment referral options are dwindling. Bens are full, patient panels are maxed out, there are no spots remaining. Month by month, we're seeing treatment programs dissolve in spite of demand because of funding cuts. LR 2599 goes part of the way toward addressing this, but not nearly far enough. Recovery without support isn't unheard of, but it is an insurmountable challenge for people who don't have the tools to begin. While this bill attempts a comprehensive strategy, it neglects a persisting imbalance in funding between treatment versus enforcement. In 2010, Maine invested $42 million in law enforcement efforts to reduce the supply of drugs compared to an investment of only $10 million for drug treatment. LR 2599 is out of step with evidence-based treatment. Research affirms the efficacy and cost effectiveness of outpatient treatment and medication-assisted treatment in particular. However, outpatient treatment accounts for only $200,000 in a bill, the total of $2.5 million, and there's no specific reference to medication-assisted treatment at all. LR 2599 is a groundbreaking bipartisan effort to address an imminent public health emergency, but it's just a start. To truly address this crisis, we must do more to connect people to effective evidence-based treatment, especially medication-assisted treatment. This is a good bill, but it comes back and we look to the leadership of the Standing Committee on Health and Human Services to make it so.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for your testimony. And then Denise Whitley, Rick McCarthy, Alan Schaefer, and Angela Bullish. Good afternoon, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Distinguished members of the Appropriations Committee and the Health and Human Services Committee, my name is Angela Westhoff. I'm the executive director of the Maine Osteopathic Association. I'm here today to read some testimony on behalf of Dr. Meredith Norris. Meredith Norris is a member of the NWA Board of Directors and president of the Maine Chapter of the American College of Osteopathic Family Physicians. She's also board certified in addiction medicine and serves as the medical director of CAP Quality, a methadone clinic, and the medical director of Brace Street Recovery Services. We're submitting testimony in support of LR 2599. As we understand it, the purpose of the bill is to address drug addiction by increasing the number of drug enforcement agents and by increasing the availability of prevention, treatment, and recovery programs. We applaud the legislature for tackling this growing public health crisis of substance abuse and addiction in Maine. We are also very pleased to see the proposed legislation embraces a comprehensive approach that includes both law enforcement as well as prevention, treatment, and recovery. I think we all recognize that complicated problems require multifaceted approaches. We do, however, want to express a couple of cautions. The resources allocated in this legislation are limited and we know that the road to recovery is often long and difficult. We've heard some really impressive stories here today. It's also important to note that no single program or intervention alone will necessarily generate positive outcomes. Addiction treatment must be carefully thought out and enforced. For example, detox programs alone are not the solution for the long-term treatment of opioid dependence, just like peer support programs alone will not necessarily prevent someone from overdosing again. With limited resources, the biggest impact on treating addiction is comprehensive treatment that includes medication assistance. It is for these reasons we do support LR 2599 and urge you to as well. We think it's a step in the right direction and I'd be very happy to answer questions.
I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Denise?
Welcome. Welcome. Good afternoon. My name is Rick McCarthy. I'm an employee at ECP by the Consulting here in Augusta. I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the Mayor's Coalition, which brings together the mayors of nine communities here in Maine with populations a little over $240,000, excuse me, 240,000 people. This is appropriation, so think about money. The Mayor's Coalition is very supportive of LR 2599, now a lead in King 37. We are seeing the effects of the substance abuse increases that are happening throughout the state. All of the members of the coalition are struggling with escalating addiction rates, increasing crime rates, and numerous overdose deaths and near deaths. That's the situation that obviously requires a response from all levels of government. We are doing what we can. We think that what's made up for you today is a reasonable first step at the state level. We're obviously confident, I think, there's more that can be done beyond that. Now, the approaches taken by coalition members today vary. The city of Augusta is in the process of implementing a home program similar to what's going on in Scarborough. They're doing it a little bit differently than they're trying to place people in state. It's the same idea. Addicts come in and request treatment and assistance and they're trying to connect them with treatment. Portland is in the process of pursuing a modified version of the law enforcement assisted diversion program. And in fact, a representative of DION has a bill, LD 1488, which seeks to expand that program to a number of other communities throughout the state. Now, the goal of the bill is to address the underlying problem, the addiction, and therefore reduce recidivism rates. So instead of putting somebody in jail, let's get them the treatment they need and get them back in the community. And Sanford, as you heard from the chief police colleague just a little while ago, is working with the Maine Behavioral Health to implement a community-based, OD addiction program and they hope they can get that underway very soon. Bangor has been working in a very creative way, bringing lots of community partners together to try to address substance abuse, actually for quite some time now. You've heard from a variety of people in Bangor earlier today. They're very excited about the proposal for a detox center in Bangor to this bill. Strongly support that and I hope that you'll include that whatever you do moving forward. Now, the coalition is committed to a three-part approach to addiction. We're pleased to see that reflected in this LD. Those three parts, as you've heard numerous times today, are enforcement, treatment, and prevention. I'll highlight a couple of the ideas that are in the bill that we are particularly supportive of. Part B, which would provide some funds for pilot projects for innovative ways to look at the population in our jails and connect them with treatment. We think that's a great idea. We encourage you to support Part B. Part C, I just mentioned, that's the 10-bed detox center in Bangor. As many of you know, I also work with the Maine Community Action Association. One of their agencies with responsibility for Scott County is Paintless. Kara Hay, their executive director, asked me to express their strong commitment to that idea and say that this detox bed is something that's absolutely needed in the region and in the children moving forward. So as I said, we support this bill. We would urge its prompt consideration and adoption. And as I mentioned earlier, there are some additional things we think can be done to meet this need to provide enough treatment and prevention services. And one of the particulars of this is representative of DION's, LD 1488, an act to establish the law enforcement assisted diversion program in Maine. That's going to be heard next week in the Criminal Justice Committee. We would encourage you to include funding for that kind of program in something, something of which you do before the session is over. I thank you for your time this afternoon and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. I am the chief of psychiatry at Community Health and Counseling Service. I'm attending psychiatrist at San Joseph Hospital and the attending psychiatrists of Wellspring Substance Treatment and Mental Health Services. I'm here to talk about support of 2599, focusing really on Part C. The proposal is unique and more preferred today in that it comes together after 18 months of work of literally every healthcare facility of size, of all major medical practice groups in the community. And this is a proposal generated by the community, for the community, with endorsement of players and referrals and delivery system in the community. It is a remarkable achievement after 18 months of work. Now, there comes a time in every addict's experience when they've had enough, when they're ready to quit and they're ready to make a change, but how do they start? And really, the detox center is not a rehabilitation center. It's a portal. It's a gateway. It's an app on how you begin to recover it. After a person goes to the emergency room now... Now, there comes a time in every addict's experience when they've had enough, when they're ready to quit and they're ready to make a change. But how do they start? And really, the detox center is not a rehabilitation center. It's a portal, it's a gateway, it's an app on how you begin to recover it. After a person goes to the emergency room now, they get a three-day comfort prescription and a phone number. They go back where they were using and they have to start and get on the waiting list. The proposal is that from the emergency departments, they get an evidence-based, safe, non-divertible prescription to deal with the physical symptoms of withdrawal and they move to a short stay, three-bed, excuse me, three-day, ten-bed facility, much like a crisis stabilization unit, where they are physically comfortable as they go through withdrawal, but they then enter into recovery. They meet recovery alternatives, they participate in recovery planning, they meet with individual counselors, and they meet in groups, and they begin to make the connections within the community on how to recover it. This is the starting point for their recovery. They have access to all the options, faith-based, medication-assisted, AA, NA, whatever, all of those are available for them to choose. It is a unique opportunity for them to begin to take the step to get well. I think it's important to think about this again as not a rehabilitation, it's not a cure for addiction, it is a, an entry portal into this. The current situation is it's about a thousand dollars a day for an emergency room stay, at least at St. Joseph's. We estimate somewhere around two-hundred, maybe two-hundred-and-eighty dollars a day for the detox, social detox center. But in an emergency room setting, frequently they're discharged after the first day unless they say the magic words. We call this contingent suicidal declaration. If you don't detox me, I will kill myself. That activates an entire mental health sort of cycle of crisis workers, of bed searches, of three to five days at a thousand dollars a day, and then a wasted psychiatric condition. There was no reason for them to be admitted to a psychiatric hospital because this is the way to get detox in Bangor, Maine in 2014, 15, and 16 years to flare your suicidal. By creating this opportunity for a safe detox, we can have a major impact on demand for psychiatric condition deaths in our region. Now, the committee has received some misinformation regarding the use of Suboxone in medication-assisted treatment in detox. It is true that Suboxone can be used as an initial treatment for opioid dependence, but it is appropriately used only as the entry point into an ongoing treatment. You give somebody a short-term Suboxone, first of all, it's extremely expensive, secondly, it's highly divertible and highly valuable, and third, it doesn't do anything, it doesn't take them anywhere after the third day of the drug. So we use Suboxone only if there's an immediate entry into a medication-assisted treatment program. Now, the social detox center may make that possible on Bell and Road, we don't know, but representations that Suboxone is a cure for opioid addiction, that it is the way to detox, is simply not clinically correct. And we've been battling with this misrepresentation. Sometimes physicians get so wrapped up in the care of their patients, they get so concerned about their patients making them well, that they grasp the things and they project their own wishes upon patients or medicines. And we have to be careful that we use this medicine in the appropriate way. And in handouts, one is a resident physician paper, giving you two newspaper articles, one talks about the remarkable coalition that took place to create this plan in Bangor. The second is an editorial piece that was published today, talking about the use of Suboxone in appropriate measures of long-term treatment of opioid dependence. The last point I would make is, I will make, is that detox center works for alcohol and sedatives. The number one addictive drug in Maine is alcohol, not far behind our benzodiazepines and sedatives, Xanax, Valium, Klonopin, Ativan. The detox center will work for these three major forms of addiction and provide a portal again, an entry point for people who have decided to take that first step into recovery. Thank you for listening. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you very much, Dr. Schaefer, for being here today. Angela Felicia, followed by Maridou, Papiana, Chris Polus, who is...
Hello. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I feel like you've been on a...
Good morning.
Yeah. But good afternoon. My name is Angela Felicia, I'm a licensed clinical social worker and the director of care management at Northwood Community Healthcare in Bangor, also from PCHC. I was very fortunate that I happened to stand in line after Dr. Schaefer so that we can present right after him. He did a really nice job of explaining the social detox program so that I don't have to do that for this committee upgrade. One of the things I do want to remind the committee members about is the high number of uninsured patients that PCHC, as a federally qualified health center, serves. And one of the best ways that we could actually treat addiction in the state is with the Medicaid expansion. That would be an enormous assistance in treating addiction in our state. I do want to follow Dr. Schaefer by highlighting some of the reasons why Bangor is really uniquely positioned to have the social detox center right in our community. Bangor is the largest service center north of Augusta. The Bangor area is really up to the challenge of serving really nearly two-thirds of our state. We have a large, as Dr. Schaefer had mentioned, the community of providers that have come together over the past year, year and a half, called the Community Health Leadership Board, made up of over about nine, probably more than that, agencies in the area to really look at how we might do things a little bit differently in terms of treating addiction and reducing opioid prescriptions in our community. One of the things that we're actively working on through that Community Health Leadership Board is a plan to have a strategic prescribing protocol for some of those what are known as controlled substance...